If you want to look at this, this is the people she hires to work in the Harahan and pays all of these people to do nothing. There's a drain on Bailey Street that's covered up. Five weeks, nobody went out there to uncover it. So I did for the lady because it was flood and flood driveway. So why do we have the guy by and charge when he does nothing? Now it drains. Then we got a junkyard on Jefferson Highway, right when you come into River Edge to Harahan, that's got cars on the side of the street for sale. We don't need that either. This is wasting taxpayers' money. Then she goes on Oak Street and cleans out a lot to get the rats and snakes because of people. That's wasting taxpayers' money. Then she went on K Street and haul some trash away. What if people should have to pay that for themselves? Right, Tina? You made me do it. Right? Haul your own trash. I'm finished. I'm finished.
Carla Tassen. Carla Tassen.
Do y'all want to see this too?
I saw it. I did my own study, and this is all of my pictures that I took.
On Bailey Street?
This is just along the highway. These ditches are just completely, you can't even see the pipe. And I have these for anyone to look at if you want. I mean, I would think that honestly, this is where you'd want to start. This is just water sitting here with a magnolia branch jammed up the pipe. This is Councilman Johnson, again, standing there. The mud's almost to the top of the ditch. Oh yeah, this is one, yeah, try to see that ditch inlet. You ain't seeing that one. This is, again, this is maybe one of the betters, and it was halfway full of debris and dirt. This one's completely full of debris and dirt. This one you can't see, but it's actually in there. We had to go dig that out. Here's another one, just completely full of debris and... Oh yeah, look at that one. Can you see it? No, you can't.
I wish I'd have brought something or prepared something to come over here with.
Where's your visual aid?
Yeah. I'm Andrew Banks. I live on Marquette Street in Harahan, right in front of the crater that exists right there. You've come out this mayor, and you've looked at it, and it's been year after year, and it's just growing. What is your intentions before this school year starts?
About that crater that's on...
Yep. Marquette.
Marquette. That's one of the problems that we want to address. That's why we put up the ordinance to allocate money from the budget. Once the deficit was eradicated and that the city wasn't going to default on a loan that potentially could have bankrupted us, at that point, we started saying, what projects can we do and how fast can we do them? So what we did was we put up that ordinance for you, sir, that this council's considering. I do wish that government worked faster. I do wish that we didn't inherit such a devastating financial situation. I do intend, it's very high on my priority list, and it's included in the repairs that we want to do.
Can I add on? The prior council before, we did deficit spend to protect you. We actually went back on Wilson, and we filled in, and we worked, and a big old hole, and that is part of the deficit that the mayor's talking about inheriting, because you could have fit three school buses in there. And I got to tell you, I will deficit spend so no one gets hurt on your street. You call me, my number's 504-343-7762, and I will come, and we will raise hell until that hole gets fixed. And I don't care about deficit spending. Our job is to protect you.
So you plan on supporting the ordinance? That's great news.
But like I said, right now, the school year, here we go, is starting again, and we haven't done anything. And once the school year starts, we really can't do nothing until it's over again. And it's just amazing that it's, you know, I mean, year after year, and I don't know what we need to do to get it done. Do I have to get somebody out there myself, the blacktop?
We don't want to.
And blacktoping really isn't the answer. There's something going on with the subdrain and everything else below there.
Actually, Mr. Callan Hotmeyer did say that it's part of the way the street is not constructed. It doesn't have the support. So when we go back and redo the streets in that area is to build them right, so we don't want to just do a superficial repair in that area. We want to put the structure in place so it doesn't happen again. The weight from those buses has to be supported.
Well, somebody should go out to Jefferson Parish, because that's not just Harahan citizens that's going to school. That's Orlean's Parish, that's Texas. My God, they come from all over the place.
What's your address again? What's your address again, I'm sorry?
321 Marquette. And I mean, it's been, like I said, it hasn't just been months, it's been years. And it's just getting old. Can we at least stop the buses from coming down that street and making them come down eastern?
Absolutely.
Because all they're doing is tearing up my street. They throw rocks all over my vehicles and everything else.
Belenti Doucette is our school board representative, and I will reach out to her and see if we can get that route changed for the moment.
At least have a minimum.
Yes, sir.
That's a good idea.
Call me, call me.
All right. So mayor?
See you in a year.
Are they going to be fixed? Oh, going to be back next year?
I have to have the money allocated by the council in order to do the spending. Part of the difficulty was, when I put up the budget, sir, quite frankly, it had capital monies allocated. This council, that's required by law also. The council basically stripped all capital down to zero, leaving nothing to spend. So anything that gets done, sir, has to come before the council. It has to go for first reading, then the next month get approved, then it's going to have to go for bid and do it. So the delay is...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
No, no, I'm saying this year, I was hoping to do that this year, so it would have happened in the summer.
Problem is, we've been...
Like I said, it's just ridiculous.
I'll talk about it later. I'll talk about it later.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you.
I do shut dance, I do a lot of work all day long, and if I was that bad, I would be held accountable.
And I've got to say...
I was told, look, you got to put your paws up in air and give up because you're not doing the job.
How long have those streets, those streets are horrible back there. They've been that way for...
I think Mr. Callan, we done them last.
They've been, it's really a long, long time since...
Yeah.
And it needs the foundation work that you deserve, so it doesn't happen again.
All right. Like I said, I wanted to bring it forward.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, my name is Charlie Ernst. 8008 Ferrera Drive, Harahan Oaks. And on a light a note, I'm here. They had Vacation Bible School on Oak Street, in fact, 276 Oak Street, for the children, ages five to 18. And we had like, and I say "we," the group that volunteered, had 56 to 58 children that would go there and make things, do things, learn about God, and a number of different things. And getting along with each other was one of them. But I'd like to thank Chief Tim Walker. He's always come forth with help for us to have auxiliary or reserve police, I should say. And each night, they come, they spend about three and a half hours, no cost to the taxpayers. These people worked during the day and gave their time at night or in the evening, anywhere from 6:30 to 8:30, at no cost. They did it because, one, for the goodness of their heart, and they wanted to see these children enjoy themselves. But every one of them, other than the night, I wasn't there, and tomorrow it ends, come with a smile. The policeman slowed the traffic down on Oak Street. And again, it goes back to Chief Tim Walker. I can't say enough about him. He always pulls something out of his hat to help us. And again, it was no money to the taxpayers whatsoever. These guys worked all day, and I've talked to them. And then they would go home and donate three to three and a half hours of their own time for the children. And I think that's commendable, and I asked chief, he knows them, if they would be recognized, because these guys done an outstanding job. And I guess, off the record, with me saying it, you know, I talked to a lot of parents over there, and they were amazed that we had the police over there, wasn't charging anything. They slowed, as I said, they slowed the traffic down, not to repeat myself, but they were really, really impressed. And, you know, like I told them, I've been out here around 65 years. My mother and father moved out here in 1952. And, you know, there is no place like Harahan. You can look around, you can search, you can, you know, and all you got to do is look at the 5:30, 6 o'clock news, and that right there will tell you. But there is no place like Harahan. But I must say, telling the people, I felt, and I still do, it felt like, this feels like a little Mayberry, you know? Everybody kind of watches each other's back, everybody looks out for each other, you got good neighbors, you got good people. But let me say this, tonight, I felt like I was in the Twilight Zone, because, you know, it turned, the meeting turned kind of from, I guess, getting along and trying to solve problems to bickering. And I'm not by no means pointing a finger at anybody, because I know all of y'all got a tough job, okay? And just like a policeman, I wouldn't want to be a policeman right now, because they'll shoot a policeman just as quick as they shoot a child. And I surely wouldn't want to be a councilman or a mayor, because, again, I think all of y'all have a tough job, and nobody gets along all the time, but as long as...
Time's up, Mr. Trump.
As long as we can not fight with each other, but try to get along with each other, I think it will serve our purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time, word.
Brian Whittle, 508 Gordon Avenue. I just have a quick question, if it could be explained to me in kind of layman's terms. When we have allocated for, and this is nothing personal against anyone, for the city attorney and the city finance director, whatever, whenever they exceed their money, where does that come from? I was just wondering if that could be explained to me, because I know we have allocated for it, and then whenever it is exceeded, for whatever reason, again, this is not after anyone, if it just could be explained to where that money comes from when that's exceeded?
Another department?
So other departments suffer?
Other departments, other lines?
So...
As was the, just like the 1.25 million dollar deficit that we inherited, that is now, for the first time, we have a $25,000 surplus, Mr. Whittle.
That is awesome.
It is awesome.
That's great.
And that is how it happens.
But I was just, like I said, could that be explained? So does it come from you, Ms. Mayor?
So we still come in.
Does it come from other departments?
There are line items that needed to be adjusted on budget ordinances that were refused to be adjusted. We have put this city back on finance, a steady finance footing.
I understand that, yes, ma'am, but that's not my question.
I was just going to say it wasn't your question.
I was just wondering, does it come from other areas? Just curious.
Brian, this is addressed to council. I doubt she's going to answer you.
I mean, I was just curious, in layman's terms, I mean...
I think it's a great question.
Yes, we rob it from, she robs it from other lines.
I was just curious. One other quick question. The Harahan Athletic Association, has that been resolved?
Yeah.
It has? They have a key?
Does the president have a key?
Yes.
Eric, do you have a key?
The president's not getting a key.
And again, this is nothing personal to anyone. The Curtis family's great. I just would like to see the Harahan Athletic Association get treated the same way as John Curtis is getting treated. They're wonderful people, so this is nothing personal, but I'd like for everyone to get treated equally.
Vinnie Moska, 7212 Stonely Drive, Harahan. Honorable mayor, council, honorable citizens of Harahan. I was blessed to have served as Harahan mayor for 12 years, Harahan councilman for eight years, and I am presently an elected official, serving Harahan as a member of the Republican Executive Committee. During my term as mayor, I annexed approximately 12 pieces of property into our city, which currently, on a yearly basis, produces about $300,000 in revenue per year. I always supported annexation as opposed to taxation on citizens. I filed a lawsuit on behalf of our city, which generated $453,000 in revenue for our city. The money was received during Mayor Moselli's administration. I also applied for federal funds of $146,000, which was received during Mayor Moselli's administration. When I retired from the mayor's office, I did leave a $863,000 capital surplus. That balance I left for Mayor Moselli's administration to use for the benefit of our citizens. I could have used it prior to leaving office, but I didn't. FEMA funds continue, as of this date, to come into our city because of the dedication of former employee Rena Sanders, who's in the audience. Rena handled all of my FEMA requests when I was mayor. In my last year in office, I did spend $1.2 million of taxpayer funds on city services, including street repairs, sewer improvements, recreation improvements, senior center improvements, and as you could ask Captain Adams, first-class health insurance for our fire and police officers. This was not money loaned or borrowed, but it was taxpayer dollars that I authorized to be spent on city services, like resurfacing streets, repairing sewer sinkholes, equipment for our playground, air conditioning for our senior center, flushing city drains, and other city needs. And this is very important. City fund balances go up when the city does not spend money on services for our citizens.
Motion for three more minutes.
Only need two. City fund...
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, for two more minutes.
Thank you very much.
All in favor? Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays.
As I said, city fund balances go up when the city does not spend money on services for our citizens. City fund balances go down when the city spends taxpayer money on services that taxpayers are entitled to. I would say two things before leaving. I would remind the council about the insurance they got when I was mayor. The legislative auditor said that should not have gone to the council, because they did not vote for it in a separate ordinance. I take, I disagree with that. When I was mayor, I wrote the ordinance, and I included that insurance for the councilman in the ordinance. It was a general fund ordinance. I didn't do a separate ordinance, maybe that was my mistake, but they still voted on the ordinance they gave them insurance. And secondly, I, Harahan's a city of friendship, and we're blessed because of that. And I'm blessed because I was part of that administration for a long period of time, and I'm here to tell you this life after being an elected official. Thank you.
I want to thank Councilman Tim Baudier for taking the leadership and meeting with Pierce Wood with regard to the wood materials, August 5th, 2016, core permit application for a new hall road along the river and retiring the old hall road behind and parallel to the levee, placing trees on berms to avoid airborne sand entering into the Harahan residential area, and planting grass over Old Hall Road in the East Jefferson Levee District we'll maintain. This action will create the same situation that is already in place from Bailey Street to Raven Avenue behind the levee. These were promises to the city of Harahan by Woods Materials Attorney Remy Donnelly and Lanyer and Associates Engineering Firm. Also, Sarah Woodham stated in New Orleans City Business on August 11th, 2016, Wood Materials building new road relationship with Harahan neighbors. We care, we really do want to be good neighbors. Again, Councilman Tim Baudier, thank you for your leadership and help in these very important matters affecting the residents of Harahan and community using the levee for exercise. We also want to thank our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for the patience, wisdom, strength, and endurance that he has given to us. And Tim, you did say that he did give the permit...
Yes, sir, he does.
Okay.
I forwarded you that email as well, and you guys can look, but I'm sure y'all will scrutinize it, but it looks legit.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job. I just have to look at your smile before I start.
Evelyn Ream, 3 Rentpass. Wood Materials is operating compost mulching and tree dumping and manufacturing bags of compost on the bachelor in Harahan, which is not a permitted use. According to Harahan Bachelor ordinance, in line six states, no manufacturing shall be done on site. Wood Materials Jefferson Parish side of the bachelor next to the Harahan city limits is zoned M2 industrial and is across from commercial area and is legal to compost and mulch tree debris. Wood Materials, May 31st, 2017, core permit request contains description of Saul retail area to sell bags of compost mulch on Bachelor in Jefferson Parish near Powellon Drive. If Wood Materials moves the compost, mulch, and tree debris back to the Bachelor in Jefferson Parish, it will become legal to manufacture and sell, and will be located right next to their requested retail area and avoid dump truck traffic. Wood Materials started compost on Bachelor in Jefferson Parish according to Google Map November 29, 2011. According to Google Map, October 31st, 2014, Wood Materials transferred the legal compost from the Bachelor in Jefferson Parish to the Bachelor in Harahan, causing it to become illegal. It joined the 2012 storm debris site that was considered closed on November 28, 2012, according to LDQ. The compost mulch and tree dumping facility located behind the Bachelor in Harahan is within 171 feet from people exercising on the levee in Harahan and within 343 feet from vast amount of residents along and behind Riverside Drive from Bailey to Harlean's Avenue. The compost breeds mold spores and is unhealthy to residents' outdoor activity in Harahan. It devalues residents' property and stockpiling trees and dangerous homes of phormosa termites, according to BNP Permit Warning. The mayor, the council, and 2010 mayor of Harahan Jefferson Parish, Councilman Paul Johnson, have sent written requests to LDF Commissioner Mike Strain to revoke Wood Materials' July 18, 2016 BNP permit for the Bachelor in Harahan. Commissioner Mike Strain is not a party to the December 7, 2016 temporary injunction. Therefore, he can revoke the Harahan BNP. Wood Materials should request a BNP for the Jefferson Parish side of Bachelor because they do not have one. As representatives of the residents of Harahan, we are hoping that Wood Materials will respect the Harahan NU Bachelor law and that was put in place to protect the Harahan residents and be a good neighbor by moving the compost, mulch, and tree debris back to the Bachelor in Jefferson Parish where it started and making it legal and allowing it to be sold to the public. Wood Materials Jefferson Parish Bachelor needs some changes to fit the compost, mulch, and tree debris, but the rewards and blessings of having their facility legal on the Bachelor in Jefferson Parish... I'm just about finished.
Go ahead.
Motion for another minute.
I have a motion by Councilman, hold on just a moment. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Hewitt, for one more minute. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes. One more minute.
Thank you. Wood Materials Jefferson Parish Bachelor would need some changes to fit the compost, mulch, and tree debris, but the rewards and blessings of having their facility legal on the Bachelor in Jefferson Parish will be well worth the effort it takes to make this possible. Tim, Councilman Baudier, I'm just very, very thankful, so thankful, I can't express it enough. We've been up here for so long, and I'm just so thankful that you moved out and took leadership on this. It's remarkable that, we are so excited that road has been permitted, and we're excited about this way that Wood can actually have his bachelor with the compost and mulch in his retail area. There'll be lots of people who will ride over to levee and buy a bag of compost, and we're just hoping that he will just really want to be a good neighbor and move it over.
I just want to reiterate one thing to you, Ms. Ream, that Woods Materials and myself will be meeting one to two times every single month to make sure this project continues on until it is to completion. And I've expressed my concerns and let him know that, hey, you know, it's not going to just be me, you're breaking the law, you need to do the right thing, you need to be a good neighbor. So, and he has agreed to that. He has agreed to giving me an open door policy.
That's really good. That's what we want to hear, because Johnny said, Sarah said, they want to be good neighbors, they really care.
We're going to make them live up to it.
So, you know, be those good neighbors and take care of the residents and give us all, you know, all, buildings like that. But I'd just like to thank you again. Thank you so very, very much. I can't tell you how happy we are. Thank you.
First off, chief, I'd like to thank you very much. I know I call you sometimes, asking questions, guidance on things, not only you, but also all of your staff, your officers. Everybody has always been so very kind, so very helpful, and very professional. I do have a question. It was the Friday before the 4th of July when they had some kind of incident in Harahan. My neighbor called me, he said his son saw on the internet that they were telling everybody to go inside like your doors, they had people running up and down the streets of Harahan with shotguns. Is there any way that an app could be made for our phones that if something like that did take place, we could be alerted?
There is one, Nixal. I'll have to put more information out in regards that you can sign up, and we put out alerts. Nixal, we'll get with you to get the information to sign up for.
Okay, thank you. Another issue that I'd like to bring up is, I want the council to think back to the April meeting, when everybody was given extensions past the three minutes, but there was one individual that got up, and her name was Ms. Valenti, and there was a motion made to extend her speaking time. It was never seconded by anyone. Yet, some of the people, I get up at every single meeting, talking about the sand company behind the levee, they were given extensions. That sand company has been there for years. And lastly, since y'all like everybody to pay your bills, why don't you start paying my husband and my medical bills?
Eric Chatelain, 700 Colonial Club Drive. First off, on a good note, November 4th, it's going to be the Jambalaya Cook-Off, the Harahan Playground. Whoever could participate would appreciate it. We'll have more flyers coming up probably next month. Mayor Lyles will pass a few out at the council meeting. Second off, I was a council member for two years. My health insurance was paid by the city. This mayor took office, believe I've received one letter stating I owed the city some money. I challenged the mayor to prove to me I owe the city money. If I owe the city money, I will walk in here and write you a check for the amount of money I owe you. Until you prove to me I owe you that money, I don't owe you a dime. If I come in here and mail you a bill and say you owe me $5,000, you're not just going to pay me. Until you show me I owe you money, I'm not giving it to you. So if you take me to court, have some legal documentation somewhere, I'll walk in here and cut that check to you with a smile on my face. Until you do it, don't say I owe you $16,000. Just to let everyone up here know, and everyone... Just to let everyone up here know and everyone in this audience know, you get the respect that you give people. So, that's life, you know? I made poor decisions in my life. I said things I shouldn't have said, and people disrespected me for saying that. I apologize. I move forward. I'm willing to help this city move forward in any way possible. I sat at the playground last night and sweated in the playground while my wife was playing volleyball because we don't have the air condition working at the gym. I want to say one out of four ACs might be working. I know this council approved money to put a new door at the maintenance building. That door still broke. If I was a maintenance employee and that door fell on my head, I'd own this city. We need to step up and do things we should do, everyone, you know? Councilman Bodie is my friend. I'm not going to get up here and praise Councilman Bodie for going back there talking to Woods Materials. It's his job. That's what he was elected to do.
At least he did it.
I'm not praising him for that. I just want everybody to do their job. That's all I want. So, if I owe the city money, just prove it to me. I'll cut your check.
Can you guys hear me back there? Not really. I'll try to speak up and blow out that poor gentleman's ears. Okay. Mayor, every time I sit in that audience and I listen to what you guys have to say, and I've said this about eight times now, I say, oh my God, what did they just say? I just listen, and Mayor, you don't have to write anything down. You can look at me while I talk. You don't have to write, I promise. Just listen for once. Mayor, you can just listen. You don't have to write.
Mr. Bruce, please continue.
I told you that last time.
Folks, we listened as she said that these folks had broken the law. We heard Tim Walker stand right there and say, please give me records. We've heard it for the better part of a year. It is desperately bad, bad trust building and team building and collaboration to accuse people of breaking the law, especially when you happen to live in a glass house and you have been breaking the law for over a year. Article 2-201 of the Harahan Municipal Code is explicit that that man and this council is entitled to financial records every single month. Every month, it says. A detailed report of revenue and expenditures for all funds, special districts, and agencies shall be provided on a monthly basis to the city council. Are you guys getting that every month?
No.
Mayor, why are you breaking the law? It's a simple question. I told you, you don't have to write. And you said everyone has to follow the law. That includes you. You mentioned the devastating financial situation that you inherited, but yet you're paying Gilbert Bures double his salary and Linda Lulu triple. She's going to make $130,000, maybe more this year? How silly is that when she can't even keep things in an Excel spreadsheet or export information from her accounting software? She has to retype it all like a data clerk, like somebody who has to key it all, and she's charging us $105 an hour? That's insane. So, Mayor, I submit, and this is the part where you really want to hear this. Leadership is about empowering other people. It's about handing over authority and power and trusting this council and other people to do their jobs well. It's about giving them the information that they need to do their jobs. It's about accountability, not only to them, because you work for them. And I submit, and this is something to think about. Go ahead.
Motion.
Motion for two more minutes.
I have a motion for two more minutes by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Bodie. All in favor? Any opposed? We have four yays, one nay. Motion passes.
Mayor, accountability is accountability to them to help them do their jobs and accountability to me and them as taxpaying citizens that are voters. We are the ones you're supposed to work for through them. They can't do their job. You're accountable to them and us. And you want to run on a record of success. I can tell that. Everybody has heard that, but you'll never get there if you keep looking to the past. The past is over. You need to run on what you do, and right now, you're showing a dismal failure. I heard in the back, and I'm going to steal the line, I want to say thank you very, very much. I heard, "Stop blaming and start changing." They're exactly right. You need to stop blaming everybody else and start changing yourself because, as Tim Bodie just said, the whole world tells you you're wrong, you're probably wrong. Thank you.
Emmanuel Adams, Harahan Police Department. I also own property in Harahan, so I'm speaking as a taxpayer, not an employee of the city, not a civil service employee, nothing like that. So, please don't misunderstand what I'm about to tell you. So, on June 30th, we received the payroll, and it was determined at that time, the HR Department was actually taking the improper amount of funds out of individuals' paychecks. Chief and I went next door. We talked to the HR Director. We explained the situation. I sent an email to him on June 30th. It took to July 13th for me to get a reply. Excuse me, for me to get a reply. Hey, look, I understand things going on, but if I email an individual every single day minus the weekends, I expect a reply, especially when you're dealing with money. Bottom line, you're affecting my family, you're affecting my bills, you're affecting my lifestyle. So, oh, by the way, I've actually got these emails as well as the read receipts from certain individuals within the city. Just going to leave it at that. So, individuals were made aware of this, yet nothing was done until I received an email July 13th. Yet, it's only 13 days. I got to understand. But if you don't have money in your pocket to feed your family, to pay your bills, what happens? You don't eat. They shut off your utilities. They're not going to say, oh, wait, we understand. HR screwed up. No, wrong answer. So, I'm just telling everybody here, all right? We talk about, oh, when the earth cooled and the dinosaurs roamed the earth. No, wrong answer. If the chief had an employee that did these kind of mistakes in a police department, I guarantee you, I would be investigating him. They wouldn't have a job much longer. I'm telling you that right now. So, why are these mistakes allowed to continue in city government? That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jean Marie Murphy. I live at 120 Wood Lawn. First of all, Chief, I know that this is one of the best places to live. I moved here from California five years ago, and I knew about this area because I've been employed in the motion picture business for over 25 years, and they kept sending me here until I fell in love. It's the greatest place in the world, and our little city in this southern Louisiana, New Orleans area is the best of the best. I started coming to these council meetings about a year ago with my friend and landlord, Carlo Ferrara, a former mayor, because I do cherish this city. And I've sat pretty quiet, other than the sewer fees and the water fees, because I know my neighbors aren't fixed incomes, listening to what goes on in these meetings. And I think to myself, I've lived in big cities. I've traveled all over the world on someone else's dime, and I got to tell you, it's hard. It ain't this hard. This is a small city mayor. It has defined needs. I have to tell you that when I heard you say you were going to run this like a Fortune 500 company, my skin crawled because stockholders are of interest and stakeholders of a corporation. You have a community. You are not for-profit business. You are to take care of the citizens through fire, through safety, through streets, to get involved in the schools if necessary, because this is what community is. This is a small, precious, great town, and I've been absent now for several months because of work, and I haven't listened. And I can't believe I have come back and it's the same dynamic. Some people try and get things done, and the mayor wants to revisit every council before her and be the savior because I'm balancing the budget. I think anybody who's sat through more than one or two of these meetings has no idea what our budget is really, because they have no idea what our budget is, because the auditors have no idea what our budget is. This needs to stop. Tim Bodie has shown leadership today. We need people to step up and start doing these things and start getting these things done. You're talking streets. You're talking, you know, safety. You're talking, we live in one of the safest communities. Is it not number one or two again? One? One. That says a lot. And to rate this man over the coals with your personal issues with him, every single council meeting is really like shooting yourself in the foot, to use another term, because in the long run, if this city's not safe, we all are going to see a change in our insurance rates, in our quality of life, and everything else. I am really appalled to see the dysfunction at work, and with all due respect to the gentlemen who's up here, I don't see any team spirit that's going to come over this particular council. I think we're waiting for our next election at this point. But meanwhile, our lives go on, and we need a council that is functioning. And if you can find a way to rise above this discord, Mayor, I urge you to do that on behalf of the citizens who actually care about real issues in this city and not the bottom line of your budget. Thank you.
Ms. Tassen's already been up. We will now close address the council.
I want to tell Tim.
We will now close address the council. Thank you. You've already addressed the council, Ms. Tassen.
When you got that.
You've already addressed the council, dear.
And that lady says that you shouldn't waste your money on it. You know how many people's lives you saved with that? Because people, the cops could walk in and the people just shoot them.
I'm asking for order.
When you got the camera, well, I'm talking, tell them, when you got the camera, you save people's, the cops. And huh, and all the dumb ladies who go with him.
Approval of the minute?
I'd like to pause right here real quick. Ms. Bures, when somebody comes up and talks, you're not supposed to go berate them after they come up and talk.
He is.
It's okay. Gilbert's upset because I said he was a salary employee and when he's a cop, he's a contract attorney. And that was wrong. That was wrong. He's a contract.
He's a lawyer tomorrow.
Approval of the minute?
I apologize.
Other people see that, and so it scares them from coming up talking because they're going to think that you're going to go berate them also. That's fine. I don't care if he's another lawyer or not. He's still a citizen of Harahan.
Approval of the minutes, Madam Clerk?
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on June 15.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? Do I have a motion to dispense? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by.
Did we ever figure out what we're doing with the minutes?
Do we have a motion? I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor? Any opposed? Wait, wait, wait. We have. We have three. How many yays?
I said nay.
To dispense with the minutes? To dispense with the reading. Three yays or? Two nays. So, we have a dispense, the motion passes to dispense. Approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on June 15.
Now comes the question, did we figure out if we can do this with the tapes?
No, cannot.
We cannot do it with the tapes.
I'm looking for the law that I.
Does it have a process now?
I don't think anybody.
Hold on.
Are you checking Judy's work?
I mean, the votes. The votes to my notes, but I wouldn't put half of this up in there. Just the votes.
LSA RS 42:20 Written Minutes. All public bodies shall keep written minutes of all of their open meetings. The minutes to be kept by the Legislative Committee and Subcommittee shall be governed by the provisions of RS 42:21. And then it goes on to more. So, there's not an option about written minutes.
So, what is our process now? Judy is still taking the minutes in the meeting and also listening to the tape, and Nicole's role is to compare yays and nays of each vote?
Chief, the process is the same as it's always been.
No, I believe two meetings ago, we addressed this and we instituted something new. Has, is that the way we're?
We asked her to just double-check the yays and nays, like everything else, to double-check. That's it. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by. Motion dies for lack of a second. Communications?
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in June, and the Planning and Zoning Board did not have a quorum for the July 5th, 2017 meeting. The following resolution was offered unanimously by the Council of the City of Harahan. It's proposed Resolution Number 2017-17, a resolution accepting funds from Jefferson Parish in the amount of $8,000 for the City of Harahan Recreation Department for funding to purchase essential equipment, whereas the City of Harahan is a city within the Parish of Jefferson, and whereas the Parish of Jefferson entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Harahan Recreation Department to provide funding for essential equipment, and whereas the City of Harahan appreciates the assistance of Jefferson Parish Councilman Paul Johnston, District 2. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Harahan City Council, acting as governing authority of said city, that $8,000 associated with this agreement is to be used for the purchase of essential equipment for the City of Harahan Recreation Department. This resolution, in effect, amends the capital project funds budget, fund budgets as follows. Revenue line item, Recreation Department increased by $8,000. Expense line item, capital outlet, Recreation capital outlet increased by $8,000. The foregoing resolution, having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
The public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to speak to this resolution, please come up. If there's no one wishing to speak, we will now close address the public hearing. Council discussion?
No discussion.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor? Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Resolution passes.
And I'd just like to thank Councilman Paul Johnston for the money he keeps giving us.
Thank you very much. Ordinances for approval?
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by. Who would like to second this ordinance? For highways and street maintenance repairs.
Mayor, I thought this was the ordinance you said you were going to withdraw.
This is for.
Highways and for street repairs?
This is the ordinance.
I thought you mentioned previously.
Right. Do we have a second? It was seconded by Johnston. So, it's up for approval. I'm sorry.
You just seconded it?
Yeah, that's fine.
He had seconded it before. Actually, it's now open to public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance, please.
Wait, can I read the, let me read the title really quick.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's proposed ordinance number 2017-13. It's an ordinance. It's an ordinance amending ordinance Number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, for the City of Harahan, Louisiana. This is increasing the highways and street maintenance line item by $150,000.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to come and discuss this ordinance, please come up.
Don't we know the motion?
Yeah, motion to open.
Yeah. Whenever you have... You don't need a motion to open a public hearing. I was trying to help move the meeting along since we're behind and because it's mandated. Anyone wishing to speak? What? Do I have anyone wishing to speak? If no one's wishing to speak, we will now close the public hearing. Council discussion?
I'd just like to... I mean, I'm all for this repairs, believe me, but I think we should push this off until we figure out how much exactly. I mean, yeah, you said ballpark's $200,000, but if they actually get into that area with the pump, it could run up. So I think we should defer this until next month, after we have true figures on what's going on with the sewer.
This is the streets.
Because, right, right.
I also...
It's still coming out of capital money. We don't know if we're going to have to pull out of capital and how much we're going to have to pull out of capital for that project.
Ms. Lulu, what is the balance of our capital right now? It's still 800-something?
I also met with Councilman Johnston this week, too, to see maybe we can get some assistance from the parish. So I provided him with a copy of the worksheet that was provided to us.
Not this Councilman Johnston, the other Councilman.
Oh, the other one. The daddy. I'm sorry. Yes. I gave him a copy of the worksheet that was provided to us with the cost breakdown. I know he said he was going to go look at the area, and hopefully, maybe we can get some assistance from the parish. But I also agree, too, in light of the new information with Pump Station 8, I personally think both of these... I know you said you were going to withdraw the one about the sewer issue. I just think at this point, until we know exactly where that is, I'm sure the top priority is the station now. No disrespect to the residents of those areas, but the street needs to be paved. Did that gentleman leave? Okay. But I'm sure we can all agree at this point, we need to have our functioning sewer system with flushing of the toilets at this point, and without really knowing the cost, I mean, it'll... We'll be able to bring it up when we know for sure exactly where it is, but like I said, I'm working with Councilman John... Paul Johnston to see maybe if we can get some assistance from the parish.
And also, I do want to bring up a little extra. When that gentleman was up earlier, it was talked to like nothing was being done because we had no money. Money was always allocated for the past two years for funds, for the capital to do stuff, including this, and it was never used. As for what capital projects were being done with the money, I still haven't received anything for the past two years on what capital money was actually spent on. That's why we put it back to like it should have been, where capital, you had to come through with ordinance to pull the money out of capital, so everybody knows where that money is going. That's the reason why we did that. Secondly, you acted like we were out of money. That's why we didn't do these projects. That's not true, because this has nothing to do with the general fund. This comes out of money that's been sitting there, $800,000. So what was told to the gentleman earlier is a lie.
So Ms. Lulu, what is the balance of our capital? So if our balance is 708, and Mr. Hopmeyer is estimating at best to fix Pump Station 8 to be 150,000, 200,000, that gets us to 500. And this ordinance reads that we're increasing street and maintenance to 150,000, but it does say in Section 1, "Total estimated costs are approximately $300,000 with the intention of spreading this over two years." And we do know we have another ordinance to follow with another large sum of money. So I would concur with Councilman Baudier, Wheeler, Johnson. I think we should pass, and we should wait to see what the Section 8 estimate comes to be. And just so the public knows, the streets on this ordinance are to repair VFW Boulevard, Prado Street, Keelman, and Marquette, and east.
So with that being said, I'd like to motion to defer until we have a better idea of what's going on with the sewer system.
I'd like to just have a comment for council discussion. The... And just go back on things. We had bills that put us on our knees. We had a DEQ loan that wasn't being paid for, that we had to pay for. We were in threat of going into default on the loan on $4 million, and we were in threat of bankruptcy.
That is not true.
That would have not been good for this city. We wouldn't be a city. We couldn't maintain our police, our fire, all the services that we want. Capital projects, we use capital money. We had repairs for the sewer system that we put through capital and a whole host of other items that we've put through capital, as the city has done in the past. Right now, I do think we're in a different position. We're in a better position so that we can walk and chew gum at it at the same time. I believe that we can address our sewer, Lift Station 8, as well as the streets, should as well as this project. Also, monies for this city include over... Well over $600,000, $552,000 coming from the federal government for grant, free money to the city, that we have to supplement in other ways. You can use other grants. You can use your own labor. You can use different things to supplement. So the cost of, for instance, a capital project of that maintenance door just got chopped by 3/4 for the residents of the City of Harahan. The roof at the gym will also be addressed, because it has major leaking problems. So I do think that we can do this, but I... There's a motion to defer. That's fine. When would you like to defer? To next month?
Should be next month, because we need to find out what's going on with the 8. Once we figure out what's going on with the 8.
I have a motion to defer.
I'd like to say something before we take the vote. The mayor saying that the city was at a state of bankruptcy is a statement of an insane person. That is the craziest ludicrous thing that I've ever even heard. And second of all, these are the scare tactics that she uses when she's out in the public praising herself and standing on her soapbox. So please do not fall prey to this. Please take your blinders off. Please open your eyes to what's happening here.
And please note, let me add, we were never in default of the $4 million DEQ loan. That is false information. The sewer fees got raised so we would have a threshold of a certain percentage of enough funds on hand. We never missed a payment, and we never defaulted on the loan. That is false information.
We didn't miss payments. You started...
How much is the payment each month, Mayor?
You started spending the money...
Oh, my gosh.
In the prior administration and made not one payment, Councilman Hewitt. You made no payment.
She can't look forward, guys. She can't look forward.
You can't own up to that you didn't take the responsibility. It was nice to get the loan, but you didn't want to pay the bill. And this administration inherited not only that...
Can we call the question, please?
$10,000 worth of unpaid...
Call the question.
I'd like to make a motion to call the question. Let's vote. Come on. I'm ready. Let's go. This is silly. We've heard this mayor 100 times.
Yeah, we got it.
We got it. We got it.
And it must hurt to hear it again.
Yeah.
I have a motion to defer the ordinance until the August 2017 meeting by Councilman Johnston.
Second, second.
Seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor?
Yay, yay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have four yays, one nay. Ordinances defer to the next meeting.
All right. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman. This is proposed ordinance Number 2017-14.
Withdraw? What's the number of it?
2017-14.
Okay.
Councilman Benton is withdrawing the ordinance.
Well, drawn, yeah.
So just so the public knows, the second one, Councilman Benton is requesting to withdraw, was also for highway and street maintenance, to increase it by 250,000, and that would be to repair Donilon, McHugh, and Sedgfield. Total estimated cost approximately $500,000 with the intention of spreading the cost over two years.
So Councilman Hewitt, so with that, after we spent all this money, would you not be at some point deficit spending?
No, that's out of capital. Next? Yes.
The next one's proposed ordinance Number 2017-16. The following ordinance was introduced by Councilman Baudier.
2017-15 or 16?
Wait, wait. 16.
This is... Ordinance for introduction.
Yeah.
Well, we should be on 15, huh?
Yeah.
I have it here.
2017-15.
Is the one that...
Police order.
No, that was my... That was my...
That's an ordinance... Yeah, it was proposed by Councilman Wheeler. It's an ordinance amending ordinance Number 1806, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2016, for the City of Harahan, Louisiana, for the Harahan Police Department. I have it here, but it's still just...
Being pulled?
Yeah.
Well, the plan was to get the figures when Councilman Baudier and I met with Carl Riggs and Ingram to have it all ready. I did speak to Chief Walker. We discussed this matter that until we get the actual figures, because the last thing I wanted was an audit coming out saying that he had overspent, and here we are asking for more. So I did contact Chief Walker. I asked him, in lieu of the information that was just provided to us less than two weeks ago, that I was going to withdraw my ordinance until I get the actual figures, at which time I do have every intention of bringing it back forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with... Ordinances for introduction. I'll be right there.
Nicole, on this ordinance, does it... Something needs to be changed on this one?
Okay.
Instead of R... It should say R1 to C1, not C2.
R1 to C1.
Yes?
It's advertised.
It was never advertised yet, Mayor.
Oh, the proposed?
Yes. It's only up for first reading.
It'll be advertised next month.
Yeah, we got it. We got it.
I didn't...
You're on it. You're on my advertisements, that's for sure.
Word of information, please. The way you all are talking, the way you're reading the ordinances, we can't hear it. We don't know what you all are doing.
We'll be... We'll try to be louder. Thank you.
So could you clear something up, please? We know what happened to 13 got deferred. What happened to 14?
14 was withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
And 15 was withdrawn.
And 15 was withdrawn.
Okay. Thank you. And so now we're going to 6, will we?
Yeah, that's proposed.
This is... These are proposed ordinances.
If everybody can speak loudly enough so that the old folks like us can hear it.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
So ordinances for introduction. It's proposed ordinance Number 2017-16. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Baudier. It's an ordinance approving the rezoning of 6915 Jefferson Highway. What's... Lots, B4, B5, B6, and D1A, tract C, Soniat Plantation subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, from R1, and I have to C2, but it needs to be C1.
Needs to be C1. Yes, ma'am.
Has that been changed to C1?
No, this is just for first reading. We're not voting. This is just for you guys to get information on where we're going at the next council meeting, so you can come speak to the ordinance when it is up for vote.
Mr. Bures?
They're asking for clarification.
R1 to C1.
This went to planning and zoning.
R1 to C1.
It's already went.
No.
It's already been three times, and there was no quorum, so I'm not 100% on this one, but I think after three times, it comes to the council.
That's part of it, yes.
Well, no, the council can, you know, take the ordinance.
Once it got deferred.
And they'll defer it four more times.
So that's three times they've met already about this.
They didn't have a meeting.
And then a third time, there wasn't a quorum. Yes, sir. Mr. Medio, can you shed some light on this, please?
Mr. Medio is on our planning and zoning board.
Thank you for the introduction. For all of you who don't know me, Michael Medio on the planning and zoning board for 9 Cremoni. Do I have to give my address?
Yeah, go ahead.
You got to speak up then.
All right, I'm sorry. From what I understand, we did have a meeting the first time about all this, and... Or this proposed ordinance, I should say, and we deferred it. I think the second time, 30 days later, whatever you want to call it, it wasn't advertised, or I don't know if there was some kind of a clerical error, so we weren't able to have the second meeting. And now the third time, which was... Was that this month? I'm losing my days.
That's correct.
So this month, we didn't have a full quorum in order to make a recommendation to the council, so I threw the ball at you. And because we didn't want to delay their time, because it had been basically 90 days, and they didn't have an answer, and so... Which also is another reason why I'm here, and I don't know if you want to brush on that.
No, you can only address the ordinance.
Correct. So I'm trying to think what I'm trying to say. So we wanted to push it forward to be respectful of his time, and also for fear of not having another quorum, and it pushing further and further. So that's why we're here.
So this is the concern letter that we received from Mr. Kevin Morone?
Moroney.
Okay.
Okay. For property 6915 Jefferson Highway. So because of the three issues with planning and zoning, it's just been pushed to us. We won't have your recommendation, and it'll come to the next month.
From what I... From what I understand, this is... I've been on the board for a couple of years, and this is new territory for me, so I don't know how you want to handle it. But we were under the impression that that's how we move forward. We didn't have anybody there to really... Yeah, legal counsel, any city planner, anything like that. We didn't know what to do, so we were just like, let's push it to council.
And y'all get deferred until y'all get the recommendation, but at least it's like, at least it'll be there for adoption. Yeah, it's just...
We're trying to do our best in order to let the citizens be heard. The citizens need to be heard, and also...
I'd like to ask the city clerk to place it on the August agenda.
Well, it's got to be on the August agenda. It's up for introduction. That's why y'all... Yeah, it's been introduced.
No, I'm talking for the planning and zoning board.
Oh, well, I don't put it on it. That's...
My question is, is it on the August planning and zoning?
Whether you're for or against the project, these people have waited 90 days, and I'm sure they want some clarity and clarification and some finality in this issue.
Yeah, between the citizens and the person that applied, I imagine.
Stay on it until...[1601.02]
Right, just keep saying on until.
Until they, they hear it. Well, they wait on the recommendation.
I don't think so.
What do you mean? No, they give an application in the planning and zoning.
That's how they always, right. So, Mr. Bures.
All right, I'm gonna go sit back now.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, can you speak to the pers- yeah. That's cool, ma'am.
Yeah, I would.
I just would like to thank Councilman Johnston, who bounces up and down during council meetings to adjust the temperature. I should, you wanted it.
There's a conflict between your, and this seems to happen pretty often, there's a conflict.
If you can just make, they want to really hear this, Mr. Bures?
Yeah, this, yeah, there's something of a conflict between state law and the, and the local ordinance. The state law says, this is LRS thirty-three forty-seven twenty-six. The legislative body shall not hold its public hearing, this is on a zoning change, or take action until it has received the final report of the zoning commission. The Harahan ordinance says, after the public hearing, that is a public hearing before you guys on the ordinance, after the public hearing is provided above, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall submit its report and recommendation upon the proposed change and amendments to the city clerk within ten days of the hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the proposed change. I'm not sure what that's supposed to mean, but if your practice has been that planning and zoning gets it from an application, rules on it, then sends it to you, then that's the procedure you should continue to follow. But it, it, I'm just telling you, the state law does say, the legislative body shall not hold its public hearings or take action until it has received the final report of the zoning commission. So, just for future.
And if, and if this body votes on this ordinance without g- having it, getting an opinion from planning and zoning?
You know, I've, I've opined before that I think that you can yank it back from planning and zoning if they refuse to act on it, but I don't think they've done anything with it yet. They haven't had a quorum.
There you go.
Yeah, they haven't had a quorum.
Wait, hold.
Okay, well, all right, well, that, that I think is okay. Introduce the, introduce the ordinance, then you know what, then you know what you guys are voting on.
And we have new members on the board.
They do on the C one, report back to you, and then you pass the ordinance.
Correct, yeah, we, we are not refusing to make a decision. We are unable.
Got you, you just didn't have a, yeah, you didn't have a.
But we have new members on the board too, so.
Okay. We, only one more, right?
Right.
And he did show last time?
Yeah.
And we still didn't have enough?
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna be addressing that.
Okay.
We are actively addressing it.
At midnight, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Patrick Pepo, one fifty-six, Atlanta, also on planning and zoning. And while we're on this subject, I know I've said this a hundred times, I'm gonna say it again. Mayor, I, I think I might be the only person on, left on board that's had any kind of training. We haven't had a city planner since you were elected. And the law quit, not that I know the law, that I could state the law, but I was told in a, in a training that was provided to us under Councilman Johnson's administration, and of the co- uh, Councilman Mosca's administration, I mean, Mayor Mosca's administration, that the law requires that everyone on planning and zoning, board of adjustments, uh, they all, we're all supposed to have training. And none of these folks have had any kind of training.
And we will, we will be, we will be a planning that training.
Right, but here's the next problem. I've asked time and time again for, uh, either the city attorney, city planner, which we don't have a city planner, or maybe the regulatory director, which I'm not sure if we have a regulatory director right now or not. But with all people who have no experience, we have no guidance. Everybody that sits on planning and zoning is just a volunteer. There are no professionals. And now we have cases that are in front of us that are fairly controversial. We have citizens that don't want this piece of property rezoned, the, the property at issue right now, that don't want it rezoned, but we have an applicant that says, I can rezone this property because it's next to, it's already next to a commercial piece of property, and it will increase the revenue to the city, tax revenue to the city. Two very good points, both of them. The problem is, with people that are not experienced, we need guidance, and I've asked for it time and time again. You were sitting here, you're sitting, when we talked about this the first time, when I asked for guidance. The next time, no guidance. Can we get some guidance, please?
Mr. Pepo, that, what I want is for our board to be placed appropriately and legally, so that there's no challenge. I want to have a building official who will go to the meeting and serve at, and give you the information that you need. I would also like that if that board needs information from the city attorney, that he be given some notice that he can provide that information ahead of time, or not be able to see if his schedule will allow his appearance. We, yes.
Your, your point's well taken, and state law does require four hours of training for all planning and zoning board members. The role of the city attorney for your advisory board would be to just tell you what the procedures are, but really, what, what you guys need is a city planner, somebody that's correct. Yeah, I'm, I'm just a lawyer, not a city planner.
Right, I, I understand, but you, you're a lot better than what we have. We have nothing right now.
I'm glad somebody thinks I'm better than the city.
We don't even have experienced members.
That's a compliment.
Sure it is.
Mr. Pepo, has that been since jump? I mean, have you not had a city planner since this mayor has been elected?
No, there's never, well, I think the mayor can answer that question.
Oh, yeah, wow. So two and a half years, we're gonna do something about it now?
Right, and, and, but the, the challenge is that we have people sitting in this, in this audience right now, that we owe, that we owe these citizens.
Absolutely.
A, a good decision, you know, a, a, a fair decision. So how do we grow the city's tax base, the, the, uh, uh, in, not the income tax, but the, uh, the sales tax base? How do we grow the sales tax base without hurting the citizens, you know, without hurting the neighbors? That's, that's a real challenge. That is the role of the city planner. Is there any, any thought about getting a city planner?
We've, we've reached out to, um, some individuals, uh, I, I've actually asked the city attorney to reach out to someone that he knows, I don't know that he's even, he's heard back yet.
I've, uh, I've contacted Ms. Karen Fernandez, she runs a planning organization, Mr. Tony Munfray, who's pretty expensive and he's a PhD. I haven't gotten returned phone calls from either of them. I think I'm gonna have to, you know, the first thing they're gonna ask me is, what's your budget for city planning? Mr. Villavasso's conflicted out because he's representing Colonial. Um, Mr. Villavasso did, however, I've, I've known Steve for thirty years, I knew him when he worked for city, uh, for New Orleans City Government, but he said there are some free resources for your training. Um, he's pointed me in the direction for that, so we can get the, the four hours of training for the, the planning board members and the bo- board, uh, board of zoning, the advise- board, zoning advisory board members. So, yeah, I am looking for somebody who wants to come in and help out with this, um, because it is important that you get the training.
Great training is wonderful, but it's not helping the folks that are sitting back there.
Right, I got you, look, and, and you, the, the city does have a master plan, um, and so that's at least something for a planner to work with, you know, he, he knows what the master plan is, and, you know, he can give you some advice on how to proceed with, with reviewing these, these issues.
But we really, we have, our city ordinance provides for nine zoning members, and we have spots still to fill, so it's incompletely filled. It would be best for the city to have those spots filled and train everyone at one time, not, you know, only fill the spots partially.
I, I agree with that, but how is that gonna affect the people that are here this evening? Both the, the neighbors that are concerned about the project, and the applicants?
And I agree, and.
You agree, I, I understand your gr- I appreciate that, but.
I agree, and part of it.
We're still sitting up here without guidance.
And part of it, and part of it is, without having the full board seated appropriately, and the education, that puts your, you know, decisions at risk. You need that support, we want that support, and we're trying to get you what you need, and we need to have people who were nominated and approved by the council.
I, I understand all of that, but in the meantime, these folks need it, and it, and it, it's kind of too little, too late.
Mr. Pepo.
It's, it's, how, how are we gonna help these people that are gonna come to, to planning and zoning next month? How, how are we gonna help them?
Mr. Pepo, can I, can I shed a little light on this for you?
Please.
Um, I'm gonna steal a phrase from, uh, Police Chief Tim Walker. This is done by design. What happens is this mayor does not want to agree to a fair allotment of votes per council member to put people on a planning and zoning. She wants to control the planning and zoning board, which we do not think is fair. We think honestly each one should get to nominate a person. She has hers, let us each pick one, so we have a representative of who we think is a great cost factor for City of Harahan. However, this isn't all, this is a, 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 this is nothing but a plan to stack the planning and zoning board, to try to do everything they can possible to shut down progress at Colonial Club, and now the entire city is gonna pay for it. And that's been jumped in day one.
That's unfortunate, because these people, these folks deserve better than that.
Yes, they do. City Attorney?
Well, no, my comments would, would be political in nature, so I, I'm gonna reserve comment, this is not, it's not a legal issue.
But, but, I just want to clarify things, because it's always nice to, you know, talk about what you want and your rights and the power of the council. You have three branches of government, you have.
Wasn't talking, wait, I wasn't talking about the power of the council, I was talking about this working together that you always are preaching about. So let, let each councilman choose a, a planning and zoning member.
You put up a resolution to appoint a, a, a police committee.
Well, didn't we just gonna be landlord?
And gave, appointed to the council, avoided the mayor, and to the police team. I didn't squawk.
Mayor, that's incorrect. I put up that resolution, and it gave the chief the right to choose three, two people, and then all fairness, it would be five spots, so if Sue wanted a person, Sue has it. It's called working together.
That's great.
That doesn't happen, baby.
That's what I proposed to this mayor about planning and zoning, and she refused to do.
But the law is, that the mayor puts the name forward, and you agree, or you disagree.
Okay, okay, ma'am.
This is why I told you when I came in, that, to this job, that I really think you all about growing the Larson Act, and you need a little home rule charter, because then you could divide the city into districts, and every district councilman would get.
And I had a very productive.
Well, I can tell you this, I've, I've served under two prior mayors, and, and, and that's exactly the way it was done. It's exact, everybody got to choose something.
I can read the ordinance that tells you exactly what you're arguing about.
Mike, can you read that, please?
Well, at least everybody got it.
Mike, go ahead and read it.
Yeah.
No, can you read that, please?
So we have a, we're short some members, and there's a little bit of controversy as to how that's gonna get worked out. I, I understand that. Why haven't we had any guidance? Why haven't we had a city planner? Whose fault is that? Is that the fault of the council also?
I'm didn't blame the council.
Well, whose fault is it?
We need, we need to get a city planner.
Whose fault is that?
They, they are hard to come by. If you wanna, the, the city council.
Well, that's int- it's interesting you say that, because you, you have plenty of criticism for Mayor Mosca, but he always had a city planner. Council, uh, Mayor, Councilman Johnston?
He wanted.
Ma'am, Councilman Johnson managed to have a, a city planner?
That Mosca told him to do. He went back on things he said.
Speaking to him, she's slandering him.
He, he went back on things that he recommended, when it, whatever way the wind blew, that's where Mr. Villavasso.
So you're telling me that you know more about city planning than a, a, a guy with that kind of experience?
I'm telling you what I saw, I'm telling you what I saw. I'm telling you what I saw. I saw him one day say blue, and the next day say pink.
Okay, we're still on, can we get off, we're, we're off topic.
We're not really off, we're not really off topic. Somebody is responsible for not having a city planner. Who is that?
We're moving on to.
Can you ever admit?
She, she's not gonna admit that.
We're moving on to the next proposed ordinance.
Wait, wait, Mike had something to read.
I, I do have a couple of things I don't want to clarify, and they, y'all never even made a motion on the proposed ordinance that we.
Talk louder, can't hear you.
Here we go, we got some, uh, people with declining hearing. So, I do wanna, I, I do wanna read some of the stuff that I looked up, because, you know, I requested that some of this be on the agenda, and there is some clarification in the Harahan ordinance. Uh, there shall be nine members of commission who shall be nominated by the mayor and/or city council. So anybody can nominate.
Michael, no.
Yes, it says it right here, it's on the internet.
Hold on, I, when I first took office, I got a.
She changed the law.
Attorney General opinion about the very.
Well, this is, this is the law that's on, this is the Harahan law, not an opinion.
This is where he's gonna get told that opinion overrides the law, because we've heard this argument.
Mayor, mayor, I'm sorry, but the opinion doesn't matter, the law matters, you know?
If I have a city ordinance that contradicts our, it prevails over state statutes.
What's the state statute say? Does it state statute say it has to be the mayor, city attorney?
The Attorney General opinion.
I, I, I have not researched the issue, so I can't answer that off the top of my head.
Well, then I would go with, I know what's right in front of me.
I believe the original appointments.
I would go on, I don't.
To create the board, it's all about the mayor.
But what I, but I wouldn't go off of what I think, I'd go off of what I see and what I know. You know what I mean? I, I'm, I'm not trying to be insulting, I'm just saying, like, maybe next time we'll talk about it after we research it.
You had your opinion last time. What they did was, when they.
I have the floor right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. So, so, there shall be nine members of the commission who shall be nominated by the mayor and/or city council, and shall be approved by the city council for a term of five years, a remaining term of an exp- unexpired term, with eligibility for reapportment for one additional term, for a limit per member of two terms of five years per term. I know there's a lot to catch in, but if you look on citeharahan.com municipal code, it's in there, it's section nineteen, subsection C, number one. Number two, let's see, oh, we'll, we'll skip that. Number four, that talks about voting in the chairman. Uh, number four, all members of the commission shall attend at least seventy-five percent of the meetings per year. And that's something that I've also emailed y'all about, saying that the people who aren't showing, I'm sure they're wonderful people, but they're not showing. The people who care and are doing research are showing, and if they're not meeting the seventy-five percent, let's get them out of here. So, the next thing is what Pepo was talking about, which is number five. Uh, the city council shall provide such employees as deemed necessary to attend the commission's meetings in accordance with the same provisions of law as govern other corresponding civil employees of the city, but not less than one part-time professional planner, known as a city planner, who will be annually reappointed by the majority vote of the city council to serve as liaisons to the planning commission and to the city council. Until a city planner is appointed, a regulatory director shall serve instead. And the problem is, is that, you know, with Pepo and, and, and we get cornered, it, I mean, we get, we get, we get hammered by this, by the citizens, which I somewhat enjoy, but sometimes it's not that great, you know what I mean? And, and we don't really have anybody, we look, and sometimes you attend, uh, I see Kerry a lot, I see Tim, the majority of the time.
So, the building official can, the regulatory, the bu- building official can sub in for the city planner. Brian Sergi has resigned. Uh, we, and Mr. Steve Brockett, who is also an architect, because an architect can be a building official, has assumed that responsibility. He has stated his willingness to attend every meeting and be there for you.
Well, he ain't showed up yet.
He wants to, he wants to get all the information as soon as possible, so, Madam Clerk, if you would send him everything.
He better be there for the next one, I tell you that.
He will. Um, if you would send him everything on this property to Mr. Brockett, so that he can have it, go walk it, and then we can share Mr. Brockett's email with the board, so that it would be nice if you had questions, to get it to him as soon as possible, so that he can start researching any questions.
Mike, when is y'all's next meeting? Next Wednesday, right? Isn't it the first Wednesday of the month?
I haven't received any email or any notification.
And I get that. I don't know how we're gonna get a new building inspector up to speed on something that's been prolonged for potentially ninety days in four days.
I mean, it'd be nice to see, look, if he submits a resume, and we get it all by email, and like, you know, we'll feel him out, but I mean, like, anybody'd be better than nobody, you know what I mean?
There is no reason why y'all have not had anybody there at the meetings two and a half years prior to.
There's a reason.
No reason.
There's a reason.
Yeah, I mean, anybody, you know what I mean?
He has stated his commitment. And I just want to reiterate, anything we do, if it counterbees, counterbees state law, puts your decision and any decision the council makes at risk of lawsuits, it puts the person who is wishing for a zoning.
But, but are, but are, I mean, are we countervailing state law, like you say, are we?
Yes, that's what the, so I, I.
You said it was the opinion.
A letter asking for an opinion by the Attorney Generals. So the way that they set up the commission at first, and if you didn't, if you're a new city and you wanted to set up your commission, they said, okay, then the mayor appoints all the members. Then from there on, it went through a normal appointing process, that the mayor would put that the mayor would put forth the nominee, and the council would vote yag or ney.
But this is the Harahan municipal code, I mean...
That counterbees, and that's what the AG...
But I have proof. I mean, do you have proof?
No, I do.
Where?
That's law, that's an opinion.
No?
Yeah.
That's law right there.
That's what I'm saying, like, I, I, I knew that this was coming up, so I brought this, you know what I mean? Where's yours?
I had it at the last city council meeting, and the whole handed it to me, and I read it, yes.
An opinion.
But it's an opinion? This is black and white. This is, you know what I mean?
Correct.
I, that's where you, that's where you're hammering me at.
But the thing is, you can, we pa- if you pass a law that is incorrect, that goes counter to state law, then where you go is to specifically hand in the...
I mean, the, the whole city can't wait while we try to find out if this might be a bad law.
So let's do it properly per state law.
And we are. We're doing it properly per the law. I mean, it's written right there.
We're not, we can get by at this?
I know, we're not getting anywhere, and that's the thing, we need to move forward. You know, it's not fair to all them, not fair to anybody, you know?
No, the, the AG's, the AG's opinion does say...
It was opinion.
It's opinion number 15-0122, January 8, 2016, and it's specific to Harahan.
It's an, it's an opinion.
And, give me an email address, I'll email it to you.
Nope, no problem.
Pursuant to LRS 33103.
You should have it, actually.
The zoning stuff is in two different parts of the revised statutes. Part of it's in Title 33, part of it's in Title 47. But this opinion says, "LRS 33103B, the mayor of the city of Harahan has the appointment authority over members of the Harahan Planning and Zoning Commission at an ordinance providing otherwise is without effect." Now, look, this is an AG's opinion, it's...
Does it say that the council cannot appoint anybody?
Why don't we not, why don't we compromise instead of getting in the litigant?
I've been trying to do that experience.
Let's just follow the law.
Why don't we just get this process moving forward?
How long you been here, Gil? Like, come on.
Two. One more thing. It hasn't been advertised.
What, this, this, the senior ordinance?
The issue in front of us right now for, for the property on Jefferson Highway, it hasn't been advertised.
Which, which property, Jefferson Highway?
The rezoning.
Mr. Maroney's application, what's he, what's his address?
6915.
6915 Jefferson Highway. It hasn't been advertised for our meeting next week.
Right, and have signs...
So now it has to be another 30 days, right?
And have, have the signs been posted?
Why wouldn't it have been advertised?
Well, it wasn't, doesn't have to be advertised that it's gonna be on the agenda for, for the meeting next month?
Okay, I see why you're...
This poor man. Why wasn't it advertised?
In other words, it was already, it was already put off one time because it wasn't advertised. Now you're saying, "Let's talk about it Wednesday," but it hasn't been advertised.
It's not gonna happen Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
But they had...
What time?
7:30.
Mr. Bureau, it was deferred.
It wasn't, it wasn't deferred, ma'am. It wasn't deferred.
The first time, it was, Michael, what did you say?
It was, it was deferred the first time.
Right, so it's still deferred.
It's still deferred.
To council members, Mr. Maroney took the time and cared enough to write a letter explaining his transactions and his communication with the city over the last 90 days. So I just want to personally apologize to you, because we can do better, and we need to do better. This is absurd. I think you're trying to do this on 6915 Jefferson Highway, a project there, which what we're talking about tonight. I believe you're trying to do something on Hickory. You are a businessman trying to bring business and, and new thriving businesses to our city, and he has been trying to work with the city and the employees for three months. He was told a few weeks ago when he came in, "Oh, that'll never pass. You shouldn't even try it. You won't get it approved." Who says that? A, a, an employee of the city says that to a businessman walking through our city who's trying to fill out a cumbersome packet, who in three months have had delays because they don't have quorums, it's not advertised. This man would like to do business in our city. We should roll out the red carpet. We should offer him all of the assistance and customer service we could possibly give. And that's what needs to be done. We can do better, we need to do better.
It wasn't deferred. It wasn't, it wasn't...
So y'all have a...
Yeah. It was deferred once, and then it wasn't advertised, so we couldn't, we couldn't discuss it, because the second time it wasn't advertised. The third time...
And then it was a lack of quorum. And then it was a lack of quorum.
Would you like to take a recess?
Yeah, let's take a recess.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess?